We are here about Security Plus. And I'm sure you guys got a lot of questions and I'm here to answer those questions for you. My job is simple, to make you more able than you were to pass this exam. So I prepared a presentation for you guys to make sure that I can help you get over the hump. If there are any challenges, I think I can help you out here. Now, what I want to show you here, okay? First thing is, there are two Security Plus certifications out there. Okay, you got the one that we're looking at right now. This is the one we're going to emphasize. This is the 501 version. Okay, this is the version that's been around since October 4th of 2017. Okay, I'm going to pull this up real quick. I just want to show you the expiration for this certification. You have plenty of time. Okay, you have until July of 2021 to pass this certification. My recommendation is to go for that one because there's very little training materials out there on the new certification. As someone who publishes books, I can tell you that usually the industry is about six months behind or three months behind when a new certification comes out. And so going for the 501 will make a lot more sense for you. Because we've been training on it a lot longer and there's a lot more materials out there on Amazon, on Barnes and Noble, wherever you want to get materials. I mean, I would just say use our courseware because we have the official courseware. But, but there's a lot more information out there on the 501 because it's been around for three years. So that would definitely be a better bet for you. And I'll also say this, it doesn't matter which one you take, you're always certified for three years after the day you pass the exam. So regardless of which of these two exams you take, you will be certified for three years from that date. And then you have to go through another recertification process. So there's no advantage in terms of your longevity as to which of these exams you take. And like I said, you have until July of next year to pass this exam. That is much, that is more than doable. So I think that would be a good path for you guys. Okay, now that being said, let me take a look here at the slide deck I prepared for you guys. And some tips and tricks, that's what this is about, okay? I'm not going to sit here and lecture you guys about every particular nook and cranny about Security Plus. But what I am going to do is help you guys get over the hump. So I got some good best practices for you. Okay, because I've been teaching Security Plus for over a decade now, a decade now. I know it in and out, okay? First thing you want to do is you want to know the domains. Okay, what exactly is the expectation from CompTIA about this exam? Okay, there are six domains of topics. Okay, these are their domains. Okay, I can guarantee you this, 21% of the test is going to be on domain one. I can guarantee you 22% of the test is going to be on domain two. Now, what does that mean? It means that you have about 90 questions. So if you have 90 questions, you do the math. Okay, what exactly is 21% of 90 questions? 22% of 90 questions? 15% of 90 questions? So right there, you can prioritize your studying. Because you know what the exam is going to throw at you from a, from a macro perspective. From a micro perspective, that's why we have the exam objectives document. Okay, this is the exam objectives document. This is once again, those six domains. Okay, so the six domains with the same percentages I just mentioned, you can break it down into the micro. Just look down here, this is all the domain one stuff. Okay, I'm not going to go over it line by line, but the 22, what was it? There was 21%. The 21% of the material that you're going to get on this test guaranteed is going to be anything that begins with a one. Domain 1, 0, 1, 1, 1, 2, 1, 3, 1, 4, etc., okay? So I'm not going to belabor this point, but I just want you to know this, okay? If you know the objectives, if you print this out, okay? And use this like a study guide, there will be questions on the test that you will get correct because you remember it mentioned in the exam objectives. And there will be questions where some of the answers, you don't remember those answers being in the objectives. So the odds are almost, are almost zero that those are the correct answers because they're not in the exam objectives. Okay, so you can use the exam objectives as like a study guide to help you to, to shape what your learning experience should be so you can become a better test taker. Now, there's also the 601 exam objectives too. Okay, this is the 601. Now, the 601, here's another reason why you want to do the 501. The 601 exam objectives actually has more material. There's more material for the 601. Therefore, it would be to your advantage that you prep for the 501 because I think it'd be a little easier for you. Not to mention, there's more information out there on the 501. If you go to Reddit, you'll see hundreds, if not thousands of posts about people's 501 study, you know, study experience, their test experience. You'll get a whole lot of that, that community feedback. You would not get that if you prepare for a new certification. So first things first, know the exam domains. Secondly, let's go through some really good tips. I think you're going to like this part. For one, and I tell all my students this, okay? They're going to hit you with the hardest questions first. They always do this. CompTIA is going to throw the performance questions at you first, and all of them. There might be between three and five performance questions, hands-on questions out of those 90. Those first three to five questions are the first questions. I can promise you that. Every performance-based exam I've ever done with CompTIA, they've always done that. They're going to hit you with the heavy stuff first. And this is what I'm going to tell you to do, skip it. You will stress yourself out and you'll walk out of the room if you try to do the hardest and most different questions first. So what you should do, flag the questions for review. And just move on, just skip it, don't even read it. Mark for review, next, mark for review, next, skip it until the end. When you have 45 minutes left, you know, I got time to do three to five more performance questions. So it gives you better time management, it gives you better exam confidence. Because you've done all the multiple choice questions first, and that's about 85 questions. Make sure you do that. I've been telling my students that for, for about a decade now. Secondly, another good tip, okay? This exam is very acronym-heavy, like any CompTIA exam. Use flashcards, okay? Go online, go to Quizlet.com, that's a flashcard site. They have literally thousands of flashcards for Security Plus. Okay, go on there, look for the acronyms. There are tons and tons of acronyms, okay? In fact, the exam objectives file I shared with you earlier, okay? Has the exam acronyms at the very bottom. If you look at the very bottom, you see all these acronyms? You can stress yourself out with that. But the best way to approach preparation of these acronyms is to use flashcards. There are flashcard websites out there that use gamification, okay? So you can literally play a game to teach you the flashcards. Like, almost like in a bejeweled concept, you know, where you're moving, you know, you're trying to make pairs and things like that. They got gamification flashcard sites out there. That will make it fun and also enhance your learning experience. Check out flashcards. Another thing is this, okay? This exam is very protocol-heavy and it's very port-heavy. So if I say, what port number is HTTP? You gotta say 80. If I say, what port number is HTTPS? You gotta say 443. If I say, what port number is Telnet? You better say 23. If I say, what port number is SSH? You say 22. If I say, what port number is SMTP? You say 25, and the list goes on. There's about maybe two dozen port numbers. You're going to want to remember for the exam. Make sure you know all those port numbers. And I believe they mentioned those numbers in the exam objectives. So you know right there what you got to study for. Also, know protocols. What is HTTP? What is HTTPS? What is SSH? What is Telnet? Okay, what is SIP? What is RDP? What is POP3 and IMAP? And there's a whole bunch of protocols. Another good scenario for using flashcards. Learn those protocols and learn those port numbers. Also, don't waste time, okay? You get 90 minutes for this test. And you get about 90 questions. So you know right away, you don't have a lot of time to waste. If you can't answer that question within 15 to 20 seconds, move on. Flag it and move on, okay? Because there'll be a lot of other questions you'll be able to fly through. And it's a lot easier to manage your time and manage your exam confidence if you save the, the difficult questions for the end when you know you still got 45 minutes of time left or 30 minutes of time left. So mark the questions and move on. And they make it really easy for you to review the questions that you marked. So you're not going to skip them permanently, you'll be able to review them later. Also, read the test questions carefully. Everybody complains about the, the reading comprehension aspects of a CompTIA exam. Okay, you got to understand what they're asking, not just understand the answers. Okay, so you got to focus in on certain keywords. Best, what is the best way of doing this? What is the most? What is the least? Like, you have to put the answers in the context of best, most, and least. Otherwise, you're going to get the answer wrong, okay? What I often do is, and I'm skipping ahead a little bit here, I often read the answers before the question. Okay, if I read the answers first, it'll help me to understand the question, the context of the question earlier. Because you'll be reading a question, it'll say, Mary has 10 servers and she manages those servers on weekends only, like this whole little scenario. And then a couple of sentences later, you realize that the first couple of sentences have nothing to do with the answers. You're more likely to know that and spot that if you read the answers first. So that's another trick, check the answers real quick. They're not going to be long-winded answers. Use that to help you to understand the question sooner and better. Now, let's go back in order. Know the tools. NS lookup. That's a tool for, for troubleshooting name resolution. You got to know that tool, you got to know what it looks like, you got to know what some of the basic commands are. Tracfrout, same thing, what does it look like? And what do the commands look like? Okay, Tracfrout, that's the, that's the Linux version of Tracfrout. And the first one there is the Windows version of Tracfrout. Make sure you can tell them apart. Dig, that's a, basically a better version of NS lookup. That's another name resolution tool. And then you got ARP, which is about resolving IP addresses to MAC addresses, right? The point is, find these tools in your materials. Learn the tools. You don't need a life's history on them, but make sure you learn the basic commands of those tools and any other tools that you see in the exam objectives. Okay, CompTIA exams, they pride themselves in having hands-on skill requirements. And so the tools represent those skill requirements. So they're going to throw a lot more tool questions at you. In fact, guess what? With the next Security Plus, you're going to get even more tool requirements. So with the 601 exam, they require even more knowledge in those tools. So if you want to go with the 501, the, the knowledge will not be as intense. And therefore, the exam might be a little bit easier. So make sure you know those tools. Which ones are for Windows? Which ones are for Linux? Which tool is used for banner grabbing? By the way, Telnet could be used for banner grabbing, right? Anyway, make sure you know the tools. Now, what about this? This is something that, that we do at our organization. It's called multi-factor authentication. Where it's not just, and it's something we implemented actually pretty recently and I was involved in that implementation. We implemented multi-factor authentication, which is driving our users crazy. But it's very good security, okay? Where it's not enough just to have the, the right name and password. You got to have also a, another factor. So that an adversary would have a more difficult time compromising your identity. But you got to know the different types of multi-factor authentication. You got to know about something you know and something you have and something you are. And using multiple factors at the same time. Something you know, I know a password, I know a PIN number. Something you have, I have a smart card. I have, in your world, a common access card, right? That's a military DoD compliant smart card, right? And I, I am something, I am my fingerprint, I am my retina scan, I am my iris. But the thing is, what makes it multi-factor is using two or more different factors at the same time. In other words, you know, having, you know, using your, your fingerprint and your retina, that's not multi-factor. That's the same factor. So that doesn't qualify. Make sure you can identify different multi-factor types, that's very important. Also, okay, with the multiple choice questions, because the vast majority of the questions are multiple choice, okay? With the exception of about three to five of them, they're all multiple choice, right? You got to have some basic skills with dealing with multiple choice questions, okay? One, one thing to do is this, think of the answer before you look at the answers. That way, you don't get skewed by the answers. If you know something, the answers might make you think you don't know it, right? So think of the answer before you look at the answers real quick, right? Then, of course, look at the answers. There's almost always four possible answers in the multiple choice questions. And two of them are from a completely different planet, okay? So two of them are absolutely useless. There's going to be two answers and you got to figure out which one is the most correct. And that's where best, most, and least comes in handy. All right, so make sure you understand the context of the question so you can have even better than a 50/50 chance of getting that, that one of those two answers correct. Okay, so make sure you do that, okay? Also, this is where the reading comprehension comes in, okay? Where they say not, or they say prohibit, where they say, you know, prevent, right? They might throw in negatives, which might change your understanding of the questions. And they might do some really annoying stuff like double neck, like double negatives. Like prevent the, 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 prevent the prohibiting, you know what I mean? Like, they might try silly things like that, just to try to make sure you understand the question. Or try to confuse you, I should say. So look for the wordplay, look for the weird stuff in those questions to try to throw you off and just don't be thrown off by it, okay? That's why I say, read the answers first, right? If, if you want to do it that way. That way, it can help you to understand the question better. And another thing is this, okay? Usually, the first answer you pick is statistically more likely to be correct than the other answers you might change to. So if you pick an answer and then you change it later, statistically, you are more likely to be correct if you keep the original answer. Just food for thought, studies show that. Okay. Okay, I think I just realized that I have the same tip twice. Tip number six and tip number 10. Okay, we're going to pretend that didn't happen. Let's move on, let's take a look at this. Get plenty of rest, eat a good breakfast. I say this because it's difficult to get good rest when you're nervous. But if you could try to get good rest, okay? You're going to recall a lot more information. And your stomach will be a little bit less aggravated, you know? Exams can be kind of nerve-wracking and lack of sleep will enhance that, all right? So you want to make sure you, you get a, you get a good night's sleep. You eat a good breakfast so you're ready to roll for the exam. Because you can't bring food into the exam room, you just can't do it. The exam is 90 minutes long and, you know, you're going to need every ounce of energy you can have to do this test. Here's another cool tip. And one of my favorite sayings, it takes a village to raise a child. Takes a community, I think, to make the best possible professional out there. You got to learn from your peers. You got to learn what others in the industry, in the community are doing. What training materials are they using? What practice tests are they using? What free e-learning are they watching? What was their exam experience like? What did they get hit with in the exam? I mean, they're not going to divulge too many details, but, because there's a non-disclosure agreement. But, you know, they'll give you a lot of insight into the learning experience and the exam experience. So you're, you're walking into the exam with a good back, with a good baseline knowledge. Okay, I take a, a kind of a war-like approach to, to studying and passing exams. You got to know the enemy. You have to know the enemy and the exam is the enemy. You got to know the enemy, you got to know yourself, okay? Go out there and learn about this certification from others who are doing it or who have already done it, who are preparing for it. Learn about the adversary. Because as a security professional, you got to do that. You got to learn about the adversary. And the certification is your adversary. So learn about it, go on Reddit. Okay, Reddit, to my surprise, is actually the number 18th most popular website in the entire world. Number 18, it's higher than Netflix.com. What does that tell you? There's a lot of content there. There's a lot of subscribers there. And Security Plus is the most popular security cert in the world. So you're going to get a lot of good community feedback about the certification on that portal. Definitely become a member on there, you'll, you won't regret it. Now, the Achilles heel for a lot of people when it comes to these exams are the, what they call performance-based questions. So I took the liberty of finding a bunch of samples for you, okay? At these links, okay? CompTIA has got a sample, SmartBuilder.com has got some free samples. GetCertifiedForLess.com has some free sample performance-based questions. That would be very helpful for you. Not to mention, if you take training with us, we give you six months of access to an online lab environment that gives you more hands-on experience too. And that'll be a full lab environment with all the tools, the different operating systems. It's a private environment, you get, you get servers, you get clients, and it's yours for six months. So that'll also help supplement, you know, whatever gaps you have with performance-based questions. All right, now the final tip that I want to give you guys, okay? Go find some free videos out there. This is good supplementary material. I think you'll, I think you'll really enjoy Professor Messer. He's got a great YouTube channel, he's got some great supplementary videos there. Cyberary.it has also some great materials too. And, you know, you, you always want to utilize multiple resources. Now, we feel very confident, if you take our training, you'll have everything you need. But I'm a realist too. I, I will be the first one to say, if you use other materials out there, it'll definitely enhance your chances for success. Because the certification business is not a linear process. It's not as simple as put this quarter in the gumball machine and it spits out a gumball, okay? There's a lot of gaps that got to be filled, okay? No single learning source can provide all of the material all the time. Even in my CAS Plus book, I don't make that promise. I don't promise that, you know, you'll pass every time, no questions asked. I will be the first one to tell you, look for some extra materials. And that's why I share these tips with you. Some of these are extra materials. And how about this? If you're going to prepare for a test, take tests. That makes sense, right? If you want to prepare for a sporting event, practice the sport. If you want to practice for the CompTIA exam, take a look at the CompTIA sample questions on their site. They're free. Take a look at, let's see, CertBlaster has also some free practice content that's also on CompTIA. Okay, I don't know what I was doing. I don't, I don't know why I got duplicate links here. I must have made a mistake there, I do apologize. But you have two resources here from CompTIA. You have their regular CompTIA sample question pool. And you got their CertBlaster product, which has some extra free trial sample questions. And then a couple of more. I found these practice questions, it's several hundred practice questions, okay? Several hundred from GoCertified.com. There are 30 of them on this site. And these are all free. And these are not, you know, garbage questions, guys. These are all questions from authors, from competitors of mine actually, from different publishers. So I know they're good, okay? I know they're good, okay? Each of these have about 10 questions. I hear some audio there in the microphone, I don't know if someone put their mic on. I'll continue. I want to make you guys aware, you have several hundred free, high-quality practice questions on this, on this PowerPoint here. That will help you tremendously in getting ready for the test. And there's another provider out there called Crucial Exams. They also have free practice questions. And to be very clear, these are not brain dumps. I do not advocate brain dumps, okay? Brain, just, I'll just, I'll tell you what it is, brain dumps are cheating questions. These are, those are actual questions. I do not advocate them and none of these are brain dump sites. These are legitimate training vendors out there, you know, that are offering free practice questions, okay? You can definitely benefit from these. All right, that's it for the, the tips and the tricks there. I do want to mention this also, we do have COVID-19 right now. And taking exams in person could be challenging for certain individuals in certain, and certain territories, you know? So the good news is, as of April of 2020, CompTIA now offers online testing. You could take this test from your home. Okay, from your home, from your computer, your personal computer, you could take this test, okay? There'll be an online proctor who has to watch you from your, from the camera, okay? They'll ask you to, you know, show, show them your driver's license. They'll ask you to show them your desk so you're not cheating, okay? But you could take this test at home. And it's very simple to do. I've done it with multiple vendors, it works great, okay? You got, you got to create an account with PearsonView. You have to do a little system check just to make sure your system is, you know, can handle it. You know, make sure there's no, any, you know, security software getting in the way or performance issues. Shouldn't be an issue, okay? But this is an option for you, okay? Now, there are options to take the exam in person. Maybe you don't want to do it online. You don't have the privacy, you don't have the hardware, whatever it is. Okay, check out PearsonView again because they're the testing, they're the testing vendor. Like, they're the ones that provide the exam center, the, the exam computer and all that. And by the way, we are a PearsonView partner, you know? So, I mean, we offer PearsonView testing. I'm not sure, you know, where COVID will play into that, so you'd have to find out. You know, I think it might be challenging to do some in-person testing, you know, given the COVID restrictions. So I would highly recommend that you do the test online. That's how I've done the last several of my exams. It's how, it's how I did CHFI, it's how I did CFR, it's how I did a whole bunch of security certs recently. And Security Plus is one of them. All right, that's all I have as far as prepared material is concerned. I hope that information was helpful for you and, and I'm sure you guys have some questions. I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. And that's it, Jesse, if you're there, feel free to take it away.
Hey Nick. Yep, thanks. Can you hear me?
I hear you loud and clear.
All right, perfect, yeah.
Hey Jesse, you're
Wait for a minute.
Your audio's
But I was watching on Facebook live in our study session group, which Security Plus exam you passed. So if you pass the 501 or
Hey Jesse, you're breaking up.
601 is one better than the other? Oh, sorry, I was asking, what are the pros and cons of a particular exam? Whether it's the 501 or the 601? Does one have more authority over the other?
No, each exam has the same authority. Each exam meets the same DoD requirements. Each exam will certify you for three years from the date that you pass it. Therefore, unless your employer has a specific requirement that you get the newer one, there will be really no advantage in getting one over the other. Except for the fact that 501 is still available. It's available until July of next year, there's more material on it. I think it'd be an easier test. So I think it'd be more advantageous for, for the candidate to take the 501. But otherwise, in the long run, it shouldn't make a difference in terms of industry value. And if you're talking, Jesse, I can't hear you, I apologize. Hey Jesse, if you're there, you're frozen right now, I apologize. My apologies, everyone. It looks like Jesse is having a technical issue right now. I'm not able to see questions at the moment, so I'm hoping. Hey Jesse.
There we are, I'm back now. Yeah, no, that's, that's insightful. With that being said, I did hear what you were saying about not being a difference. With that being said, does that mean that the 601 is going to be inherently more difficult? Is it harder? What would be the reasons to take 501 now versus the six, waiting for the 601?
Yes, the, and by the way, you can hear me okay, right?
Yep, yep.
Reason why, yeah, the 601 will be harder, okay? Every CompTIA exam that comes out as, as an upgrade over the previous one is harder than the previous one, okay? What's happening is, CompTIA is, they're trying to, first of all, they want to compete with other vendors out there. They want to show that they're not the, the little kid in the playground. Like, we got the easy certs, everyone's got the more difficult certs. So at every revision to a certification, the exams have gotten more difficult. And I've heard that not only from students, but even fellow instructors. Wow, I just did the new Cloud Plus, it was harder than I thought. The new exams are always more difficult than the previous one. And also, CompTIA has said this, they said that the new Security Plus is going to have more knowledge requirements than the previous one did. So you have to, you have to know more for it, you know? And therefore, you know, I think you have to think about that in terms of which one makes more sense for you. Unless your employer really wants you to get the new one, I always tell my students, get the previous one. It'll be a little bit easier and you have more resources to help you pass.
Perfect, thanks, that answers those questions. If anybody has any other questions, you can go ahead and visit our website. And Nick is going to bring that slide up right now. The website domain is pretty easy, it's NHDOD.com. There you can find our interactive course schedule if you want to look up Security Plus training. If you wanna look up, uh, Security Plus training, if you, uh, need to enroll, um, your team or any member of the military, NHDoD.com or government contractors.